I'd like to sorry, call this meeting of the Fargo School Board to order. Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'd appreciate a motion to approve the agenda. Jim?
I move we adopt the agenda as provided with an HR addendum added to the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Correspondence? I'm going to pass around a letter that was addressed to the board from a patron regarding boundary issues, so I'll pass that around for you all to read. Does anyone else have any correspondence to share? Okay. In that case, we are at the recognition of the audience, and this evening we have four people signed up to speak. I will just give you some brief instructions before you step up and speak. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address for the record. We would also ask that speakers refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond to or debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. And our first speaker is Jerry Saylor. Sorry, could you just make sure the microphone is on? Just, oh, thank you. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Yes, good evening. I just have a couple of questions. Recently, I had a candidate for the school board stop by our house.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Jerry Saylor. I am located at 1625 10th Avenue South, just across from Carl Ben Allison. And recently, a candidate who is looking to be elected here stopped by and started talking to me. And I posed a question to her, and she suggested I stop by here and bring it before you. So, first question is, we have sons who will be writing the SAT and ACT exams in the near future. And the question is, will students be, will our students be expected to know common core curriculum on the newly-written exams? We heard that they're rewriting the SAT. I believe the SAT is done, and the ACT is about to be rewritten. So that's the first question. And the second question is, would it be possible to shift future meetings of this board to a later start time? For example, a 7:00 PM meeting would allow parents the opportunity to get home from work, feed their family supper, and still make a school board meeting, possibly resulting in a larger crowd? So, those are my two questions, and if I could have answers in writing at some point, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Anderson.
My addre, my name is Carla Anderson. My address is 3039 31st Street South in Fargo. Good evening. I am a mother of two sons in the Fargo Public School System, and we live in the Bluemont Lakes neighborhood. In the fall of 2015, when the Eggclap Elementary School opens, my kids will be starting their junior year at Davies and 8th grade at Discovery Middle School. Per the boundary changes, Danny would switch to Carl Ben for 8th grade, and then attend South as a freshman, while my other son will be a senior at Davies. My family's concern is being split up between two high schools. After the new boundaries were proposed, I spoke with Betsy Beaton, who told me the school's intention is not to split up families. I also sent all the school boards an email on May 22nd outlining the, my concern and possible solution. A possibility would be to have the students in 7th through 9th graders who have siblings currently in Davies to continue on with the school they are in, so the family can stay together. I don't know the number of students and families this affects, but I can't imagine it is a very large number. Please consider this small adjustment, starting the boundary changes with the 6th graders in the Bluemont Lakes neighborhood, who have older siblings already attending Davies. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Farrell.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Farrell. My address is 316 23rd Avenue South. I too have children in the same predicament that Carla has. I just have a suggestion to add to her ideas where, possibly to have a meeting with the Bluemont Lakes area residents, kind of an open forum, that you could have some questions and an answer period for people that are affected the same way we are. We're not the only ones. And I just, I, it's sad to see that we're the only two sitting here in this, this position, but I just think it would be a good, good idea to have a meeting for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric Christensen.
Hello, my name is Eric Christensen. I live at 906 University Drive South in Fargo. I have two children in the Fargo Public Schools, and I just wanted to talk about the, the boundary adjustments. I wanted to thank the school board for recommending looking at the options that were presented now with the new proposals, and I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for all of you for coming out and addressing the board. Next, we are at staff reports. Unfortunately, we don't have an FEA rep tonight for various reasons to do with the end of the year, that no one could be here tonight. So we will move on to construction warehouse update with Brock, please.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'll give you an update on the HVAC projects that Rusty inquired about at our last meeting. Also give you an update on Eggclap Elementary, and what we have learned recently and shared with the planning committee regarding the warehouse and the city project for 2nd Street. Regarding the HVAC projects, really, the six buildings are moving along as planned. Actually, many of them ahead of schedule, so we're very happy about that. The chiller pads are in the process of being poured at most of the locations, so again, we're getting to a process before school gets out where we can do work that does not interrupt the educational process, and really get ahead of that project, which has been good. Many of the contractors that need to work in the building are on hold until June 2nd, when school gets out, and then give administration and staff in those buildings some time to get the areas cleared away and ready for the work to come in. We're going to be allowing some access into the corridors to get some ceiling tiles and things removed, that which, again, will not affect the educational components, or again, we can try to try to get ahead of some of that. The asbestos management has been moving on as scheduled, and in any of the buildings where that is needed to happen, that has been happening, again, where it's allowed during that time. Teachers have been packing up items as they've had opportunities to in the construction zones, so we are having them pack up their own personal belongings, because we don't want central staff in there for the, for things that would be their own personal items. We want to make sure they're taking the appropriate care with that themselves. And so, really happy with the current progress and feeling like, from a schedule perspective, there's no concerns or reason to be concerned as we proceed through that, that process. Again, I would say that many of them have moved along more quickly than we had anticipated without interrupting the educational process. Any questions on that before the elementary update?
Not as much a question as a comment. I had a meeting at Clara Barton, and I'm pretty sure that some of the construction workers had to fend off parents who were trying to hug them because they're getting air conditioning. So, really, everybody's thrilled to see that happening.
A good report. We can handle that. Perfect. No hugging in the construction zone. Okay. All right. Regarding the new elementary school, we do have construction meetings every Monday, with yesterday being a holiday, that meeting was today. The rain has slowed us down already a little bit, so we are about a week behind schedule, but we feel very confident that if it's dry, that we will catch up with that time and get back on schedule, so we'll be good there. Most of the foundation has been completely dug out, and clay put back in, in the areas where they had to dig down. As you recall, we were digging, I believe it was 12 feet down, and then inter-laying that dirt back in and compacting it, so that work is being done. The south parts of areas B and C, those footings will be going in first, and that will be getting started here within a week or two, I believe, once they certainly are feeling it's dry enough to start putting those footings in. And then, I see, the week of June 5th, and so by next week, we'll be starting that. We, if you go by there, you will see that there is a fence around the entire construction area. We do have some children living around the area there that have been coming into the construction site on weekends or evenings, and we need to make sure that's not happening, so we've taken appropriate precautions there. And so if you see a fence, that's the reason, it's a permanent, or excuse me, it's a temporary fence for the time being. So again, getting work, lots of collaboration with the library, with the city, the park, the, with Bethel, and with the apartment complex that's nearby, and things there are progressing nicely, and a lot of it is weather-related, if we've gotten slightly behind, but we'll feel, feel good that we'll catch up there. Questions on the elementary school? The last update I have for you is, as we've talked, the city has communicated with us, and you recall that during the long-range facility plan, late in that process, Dr. Schatz brought to the board the notion that the 2nd Street flood wall project that the city would be taking would affect our warehouse facility, and I think I need to, one of the things we're finding out is we need to stop referring to it as a warehouse facility, because what we found out in probably the last two weeks is, the appraiser who is looking at that came in and was shocked to find that it's not a warehouse at all. In fact, the, the least of what that facility does for us is be a warehouse, with the central kitchen, with all the trades that are in there, all the, all of the mechanical and logistical pieces of a building, to really, as they called it, a, a commercial manufacturing center, an operations center. And so, what that means is, the value of that property has significantly, has likely changed significantly than what we thought. And more importantly, and we're going to talk about this later in the agenda, the replacement of that facility is probably more than we might have anticipated, and I did share that with planning last week. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that, you know, what we have commonly referred to as a warehouse is not four walls and a concrete floor that you stack boxes in. And so there's a, a lot of, a lot of operational pieces that go on there that have really changed the dynamics of what the appraiser thought they were appraising when they first came in the door. The good news to that is the city will hear those same things from the appraiser. Jim Free and I are actually having a follow-up meeting tomorrow with two of the individuals working on the appraisal, and that is really to get to the logistics of what is attached to the building that can't be moved, because that certainly affects what the value of that property is, versus those things that we can move. And it's not as simple as, well, you know, the, some of the prep tables in the kitchen have been fastened to the wall, but you can unfasten them and take them. They, they don't necessarily look at it like that. In some cases, moving those may be more of a problem than simply having them be part of the purchase of the building and accounting for that. So those are some of the things we're going to work on tomorrow. So, we have done some work with a local architect to just get us a sense, so we understand when the city gets the appraisal and comes to us and starts the negotiation process. We wanted to have some sense of, what are we getting here? What, what is it that we're looking at? If you simply replace it, or if we do some other things, what might that look like? And so, you'll see a request from us later on your business item to go out for an RFP for an architect, so we can get ahead of that process, so we feel like we're ready to act. One of the concerns that we're having is a timing issue, as ideally, as soon as this fall, the city has indicated a desire to have a portion of that building as they start to get the infrastructure in place. That can work for us to a certain degree, however, getting a, with the thought being total completion by summer to fall of 2015, one of the concerns I'm starting to have is getting a commercial kitchen to this magnitude up and operational in a year or less. I think right now, we got a 14-month window. I think we're going to need all of that. If we start to get into July or August before we have something started, we're going to really be cutting it close to get that finished. So we want to try to get ahead of the game, so that once the negotiation's ready, we have a blueprint that we would say, okay, here's where we're going to go. Let's get this done. So we can discuss that more when we get to that portion. But just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that whatever you might have been thinking for a warehouse, this is a much different building, and actually, as we go forward in replacement, we will likely be changing that functionally to an operations center, just to have a better depiction of what actually happens there.
I'll ask if anyone has any questions, but you may remember that several weeks ago, I took a tour of the operational center with Jim Free, and afterwards I said, and this is really a warehouse? So I am not surprised by this realization, and I think that, I, I again urge any of you who have the time and interest to take a tour of the operational center, so that when this comes back to us with more details, you will really understand what it is we're, we're talking about here. And does anyone have any questions for Brock at this time? Robin?
More of a comment. I'm, I want to make sure that nobody thinks we are being misleading. We just, it was, had the moniker of warehouse, just because that's what we've always called it, and, and there was nothing meant to be misleading in any way by the board administration.
Anyone else with questions for Brock? Okay, thank you. I guess we'll get to you again a little later. Do you have any other reports at this time, Brock?
Nothing at this time.
Rachel?
Nothing.
Dr. Gross?
Nothing at this time.
That's?
No, thank you.
Okay. Well, in that case, the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion. Linda?
I was tempted to pull that off, just to see if there was such a thing as a domestic model. Apparently, I've learned that there is not, so I move that we approve the consent agenda with the HR update.
Approved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now we're on to the business section with the operational plan. Since this requires, well, Dr. Schatz, do you want to introduce it first?
Sure can. Okay, before you, you have what we're calling is our summary of our operational plan, or our operational plan report for 2013-14. As you know, at the beginning of the year, we submit an operational plan, which is approved by you, the board. This year, we changed that plan to include an alignment with the Advanced Ed standards. So at the beginning of the year, you received what we saw as our major tasks for the year. What we're presenting to you tonight is the report of how we've done with that this year. We took on quite a bit this year, and what you see in the report is completed and/or ready for the next stage. And that's really, it's, it's an ongoing, you know, living, breathing document, and so it isn't that you complete all these things, and then while that's done, and let's just move on to the next thing. And so, and that's how we put that together. So, some of the highlights that I outlined for you, that I just want to mention real quick of the plan, I really think it was important this year that we came up with the Education at Works Initiative, that has that collaboration between West Fargo-Moorhead and Fargo, working with the EDC, with local businesses and leaders. And really, the, the most exciting thing, I think, in that process at this point, is that through the work that Bob did with those districts, is develop what we call the Metro 21C rubrics, really, which is 21st Century Skills, a rubric that each school district will use when they review their curriculums, to incorporate 21st Century skills into each one of their curriculums. And so it'll be consistent across the three major school districts. And so I think that was a really nice collaboration, and kind of an alignment of similar, common language, and then similar types of things that can be done in the curriculum, depending on the, the type of curriculum. The second thing was the, the Virtual Center, the Career and Technical Educational Virtual Center with West Fargo-Northern Cass. Again, something that was appropriated in the last legislative session, to provide us monies to collaborate with West Fargo and Northern Cass, to hire a common director that'll oversee the programs in all three districts, work with us in providing stronger opportunities for our students, and hopefully, curriculum in the future that is meeting the needs of our students and would represent what's really going on out there in the real world. So, we're excited about that, and that was a, another big initiative that we got done. The Glass Paper Project continues to roll out across the district. Next year, all students in the high schools will have the laptop. The training for teachers is ongoing, and with Jodale Taiken taking over what we're calling our Standards-Based Director, Director of Standards-Based Education, she will bring that alignment to all those curricular areas, along with provide that professional development for teachers, bringing the technology piece and the curriculum together. And so we're excited about that, and continue to see exponential growth in the schools that have now had the computers for two years, with regard to student use, and then teacher and how teachers are teaching in the classroom, problem, problem-based learning, project-based learning, those types of things. So, and I actually went out this year and spent quite a bit of time going out and looking at this in action, and so we're very excited about that. We realigned the Teaching and Learning Department for next year, and we're currently in the process of putting the right people in the right places, and we believe that'll give us more focus with our curriculum. Also, it'll provide our teachers more assistance on the front lines with regard to the types of support that we can give them, moving the support more out of the district office, but more onto the front lines. And so that was the whole purpose behind that, and that was quite a, quite a process that we went through. Training. We've done a considerable amount of training this year with our administrators, and also with our district office staff, with required, across the board, with the HR department, rules, regulations, policies, those types of things, hiring practices, evaluation practices, all those types of things. And so, a considerable amount of time done with that. Cheryl and her team have done a great job with that this year. And then the last thing is the realization of the long-range facility plan. We approved it at the beginning of the year, but now we're seeing it roll out, and all the different steps and stages that we're in. So those are just some of the highlights. You're going to also see throughout the plan, many different areas that bring focus to our work, as you can, when you look at it and read it, it kind of starts to align itself. And so, we feel that we've accomplished our, our goals for this year, and that we're ready for the next stages, and tonight, we're here to answer any questions you might have, and then ask for your approval of the report.
Questions? Ron?
Madam President, and members of the board, two questions, Dr. Schatz. My first is about 21st Century Skills. Is that like revised 12 times? By now, I'm, I'm just thinking it's so, it's evolving so quickly, what they were and where, where we're at even now in 2014.
Well, and that is an ongoing process, John, and, and as we look at that, that is the, the way that we're working with students in the areas of communication, collaboration, and, and all, and all those types of things that we want students doing in today's world. And it does evolve as time goes on. So I think that the work, and I can maybe have Bob speak to this, but the work that Bob did with the other districts is again, a living document. It's not something that, okay, well, that's done, and it's going to be that way for a long time. It's something that'll be looked at. So Bob, why don't you address that, too, just with the work you did there?
Certainly, I think it was a very exciting opportunity. Like Dr. Schatz said, we worked with representatives from Moorhead and West Fargo to, first of all, define collaboratively, what do we mean by those critical collaborative thinking, communication, and creative thinking skills? We then took the time to say, not only do we want to agree on what they mean, but we want to operationalize them by talking about what it means at the student level, and putting them into shared rubrics that all three districts will use, that as students move from district to district, they'll have that same experience, but also that as we begin to share professional development across our three districts, we're talking about the same language. And much of that will be part of our summer tech camp, as our districts are coming together there. We will be having a, a large opportunity for all the administrators to come together during tech camp, to hear and learn more about the, the work that we've been doing, but then how all of those are being embedded into our units of study, if that is at the elementary, middle school, and high school, the appropriate skills for that grade level. So I think it's very exciting, the work that we've done across our community.
And Madam President, if I might just continue. This isn't a big deal, but I, I think it's worth noting for, for, in light of the brouhaha in the public in the last legislature about milk and, and beverages for students, if you would just highlight the accomplishment that's reflected in this, so the community knows, Dr. Schatz, the resolution that happened in Fargo Schools, please.
And Brock, I might have you address this a little bit, too. You were working with the foundation on that, but we worked with the, with the Fargo Foundation, Public School Foundation, and were able to partner with them in providing some additional resources for us to make sure that we're providing those milk breaks, money for kids that don't have the money, and those types of things. And Brock, do you want to speak to that at all? Anything else to add on that? Really, that's what it was.
Yeah, I, I would just echo what Dr. Schatz has said, with meetings with Carol Johnson, with Deb Labor and their Nutrition Services Department, and really with some principals to find out, what can we do? And, and there was a lot of talk about looking to the future, when you talk about completed and ready for the next stage, about, does that evolve into a mid-morning snack type of break that maybe is beyond milk? And so I think there was a lot of momentum and eagerness to be involved, and Nutrition Services, through Deb Labor, was very happy to be involved. We got great feedback from the principals. Will this continue?
Rick?
Last year, when we went through the operational plan that we talked about, or a little bit about early childhood reading recovery, and the emphasis on, on early elementary reading and that type of thing, and we had a presentation during this last year, I believe, on the reduction in federal funding for those reading specialists that occurred over the last several years, so we've got significant cuts in, in the, the federal funding for that program. I think last year, one of the operational plan, or one of the, one of the items here was to study where we're at with early childhood reading and, and that type of thing, and I, I asked at that point in time, are we going to do anything more concrete than study that? And I think the response was, we're going to find out where we're at, and then we'll put a plan in place, and maybe I missed it when I was reading, going through here, but do we have anything specific with regard to elementary reading recovery, or additional emphasis on early childhood reading in elementary grades?
I'm, I'm going to let Rachel address that one. That would be hers.
With the reading recovery, we have just been able to maintain because of federal funding, so reading recovery as a standalone program. We haven't been able to modify because of the funding. However, what we do in our non-title buildings comes from our district dollars, and we have maintained those services as well. Additionally, we're working with SEEK, and they, we have a North Dakota Reading Corps program that has been called AmeriCorps in the past. We now have expanded that to every elementary school next year, except for McKinley, and add that on the following year. That program is serving many kids that we consider yellow, they're kind of on the fence of almost being proficient, and we're serving several children.
So we actually added staff with, in regard to that, or how, or what are we doing to improve, or, or to expose that to more children?
There are AmeriCorps members who actually are employees of Jamestown Public School, because it's through SEEK, and they are given a cost of living stipend, and when they complete their year of service, they can earn back an educational stipend to pay back student loans. They're not really our employees, but they're highly trained.
And I, when I was out at the Early Childhood Center and I went down to what we used to call the Even Start Room, the AmeriCorps worker was there. And so I got to actually see that in action and actually working with the students, reading to the students, working with students on reading skills. And so that has been a nice collaboration and partnership with Seek and with the students that they have available to provide those services. So that's, that's one of the ways that we can do that. So it worked well in what I saw was going on with that.
And that was something additional that we added this year was the preschool program, which we have not done in the past either. So we've continued to grow that over the past three years.
Paul?
One of the areas that I've been interested in for a long time, and I like to monitor whenever we come across these things, is the Gifted and Talented Program. And I realize we didn't ask you about this in advance to be prepared, but maybe you could highlight, because I noticed it talks about the GNT K through 12, maybe you could highlight the K through five, the six through eight, and equally important, the nine through 12, what our efforts are in there? And has our staffing changed any in that area from year to year, or is it projected to change?
At elementary level, we have maintained our current level of support. This year, Anne Duke sure has been working very closely with Special Education to talk about the number of students that we're seeing being referred to as twice exceptional and how we can service those students. They've done a year-long book study, really trying to figure out what makes these kids tick and how we can help them the best way to be successful in the regular classroom. And we've proposed some funding to continue that into next year. We're doing a site visit down to a school in the cities who has been working with a specialist in that department. And one of our special ed coordinators has been part of that group, so it's been a really good collaborative effort. And that team will be available next year to MTSS or RTI teams as they come across kids who have these characteristics to be able to help them and really trying to keep them in the regular ed classroom.
And then at the secondary level, as we talk about middle school, we have teachers who provide instruction in mathematics for students who have been identified for grade advancement. So those students, instead of being in a seventh grade course, may be in a pre-algebra and algebra course. We have gifted and talented teachers at the middle school who then help and coordinate services with the teams. So either by co-teaching or providing some of that mentoring for our staff. And then at the high schools, we look at our wide array of course offerings that we have, including many AP level courses for students who have particular areas of interest, and some of our higher fourth level courses for students as they progress through the system.
Would it be fair to say that in the high school, our gifted and talented program right now is centered around AP types of courses?
I think that's one of the offerings that we do, but we offer in some of the areas that we do not have AP level courses, both third and fourth level languages for students who may look at that. We look at a series of courses in career and tech ed for students who have a talent in that area. So there are many opportunities for our students to find that niche that they have, find that talent, and to explore in our course offerings.
And then two more, I think, hopefully just two more. Can you give me an idea of what the staffing is of gifted and talented staff members in the elementary, mid, and high school? And I'm, when I talk about staffing, I mean, if we say, well, all the teachers there are kind of trained in that area, but how many are really part of the GNT staffing process? And do we anticipate that will be the same next year or change? And then I have one more after that.
Started the year at the elementary level with 10 full-time, and we found we needed to provide more services between Kennedy and Kennedy at Eagles, so we added on a part-time member after winter break.
Those are gifted and talented, not special ed?
They are specifically gifted and talented teachers. And also, they meet together, those 10.5 teachers, during our district professional development days. And Anne Duke sure, who actually services at the middle level, but she's our specialist in that area, has provided a lot of professional development in helping them to work with students on a pull-out basis, as well as helping them collaborate with the classroom teacher to provide the best service.
But 10 and a half FTEs?
K-5.
Okay, great.
And then at the middle level, we have at least a half-time individual at each of our three middle schools who work with our teams. And then in addition to that, we have, based on needs, number of sections of some of those advanced math courses. So that changes each and every year based on the number of students who have been identified who are ready for that next level of mathematics.
High school?
At the high school level, we wouldn't have any teachers who are designated as gifted and talented teachers, but we have multiple teachers in those higher-level courses and AP level courses.
And I can address that, Paul. We have, our AP teachers now are required to go to institutes, and they're required to have their syllabus reviewed through the AP institution. So it's a much more rigorous curriculum, and the teachers are much more trained and prepared. So I would call them gifted and talented teachers because they're working with those kids at that level. The other thing that we have with our dual credit courses for kids who want to go on and get that experience and get that credit at the college level, very similar type of review process working with WAP and Science. And so those teachers are working with their professors there to collaborate on their syllabus and the rigor that's in the class. So at the high school level, that's what we have.
Would it be pretty much accepted in professional education circles that gifted and talented programs focused on advanced placement or upper-level classes, is that pretty much the norm with gifted and talented around the country? Or do you have any thoughts or experiences about that?
My experience is that's exactly what we have at the high school level.
Around the country, not just here?
Well, around the country, you've got Baccalaureate programs, you've got other types of international programs that some schools have used, but we haven't done that here. And that's where we're at in Fargo.
And then the last question I have switches ground to a different area. Has there been a directive lately that the middle schools cut back on PERS or other staff members for next year?
Now we're talking budget, and I can let Brock talk to you about that. That's a little off-topic with the operational plan, but
We could wait.
You can ask that question?
Go ahead, Brock.
I thought it was a directive, not just a budget thing. It was maybe
It's not an operational plan item, no. It's building the budget for next year, and it's working with our principals in assisting us in that budget-building process. There's been no direct correlation back to tell anybody that they have to cut anything. What we're doing is we're appropriately staffing the schools. And so if that means that in some positions, it's less than what they had this year, or next year it's the same, or maybe in another school it's one more because the needs are there, that's what we're doing right now, and we're really balancing those staffs. We have a certain obligation. Matter of fact, we have an absolute obligation to bring you a zero-balance budget. So we're working through that process. So if there is that conversation out there that there are cuts, I wouldn't call them cuts. I would call it balancing so that we can fit within our budget, and that's really what's going on right now.
Members of the board, Paul, I would just add, if you look at the operational plan, one of the things in business services that we talked about is redeveloping a new budgeting model that really incorporates input from across the district and getting people much more involved. And in fact, at various principal meetings, Dr. Schatz, Bob, Rachel, and I have all talked to them about, we want you part of the process. And so much so at a most recent meeting, understanding where our budget is and what was reported to planning, we've asked them specifically, give us ideas. And it's really part of wanting to spread out the budget process to get as much knowledge as possible. And as we work toward that, it, just as Dr. Schatz said, it's a combination of what we want to do in our operational plan and making sure we bring you what you expect us to bring you from a budget perspective.
When you say you're going across the district to get input, how low down in the district do you go? How low down, but how far, how deep do you dig? Do we stop at the principal level? Is that pretty much where we go?
Members of the board, Paul, I would say that it starts with the cabinet, it then goes to the principal and directors, and that's probably where we are, and with the hope being that each of those groups is communicating with their teams and working with their teams to brainstorm about what are the best ways and best approaches for us to make sure we're operating within the resources that are available to us and really aid the entire district in the mass that is the general fund budget as opposed to building to building to building, each of them doing their part. So cabinet, directors, and principals, and them each working with their teams.
Excuse me, I'd like to, these are very interesting questions, but when we get to the budget topic at a meeting, then I'm sure you'll have more questions specific to the budget. But today and right now, we're talking about the operational plan, and I have Chris next, if you have any additional questions about the operational
I do, just to quickly ask a question about gifted and talented. When I shadowed a student at North as part of student engagement, I attended an, I don't know if it was an EP, but it was certainly a dual-credit bio class, and that's another opportunity that we offer is our college and high school credits, which is a pretty great opportunity for our kids. I just read this, and I was stunned by the amount of work that everyone has done in the past year. I just cannot say how impressed and overwhelmed I am at everything, on top of the crises that have occurred in the last year. I mean, you have a school, I mean, a school district with over 10,000 kids, you know, those things happen all the time, and they come straight to you and the rest of the team. And on top of that, you were able to accomplish everything in this. I just, I'm amazed and so impressed. Some of the things that really jumped out at me were the changes in the HR division, which I thought were fantastic, the collaborations around the metro area that you're undertaking, and just to build that sort of infrastructure for education metro-wide is amazing to me and fantastic. One of the things that I've been incredibly impressed with is the cabinet and directors' leadership visioning work that you did, getting everyone on the same page, excited about where we're going as a district. I think it's just an incredible leadership skill and great opportunity for everyone. And then, of course, the internal audit of the special ed department and the reorganization of the student support services, I think is just going to serve everyone well in terms of consistency across the district and what we're providing for kids. So I just wanted to say thank you to cabinet and to you, Dr. Schatz, for all your hard work. This is just incredible to me, amazing. Thank you.
Linda, and then Robin?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Since you have restructured the way you do plan and aligned it more with the cabinet silos that it was before, will that, I would imagine, make advanced ED accreditation process go quicker?
I don't know if it's more quicker, but it certainly aligns better with the standards that they use to measure how we're doing in those categories. I think for any team coming in that would review our school district, it'd be easier for them to better see how we're doing that because it is aligned. And so it also then leads to everything else we do. And as we look at our strategic plan for next year, that's what we need to do too, is bring that into alignment with the same standards so that everything really has that consistency and flow with what we're doing. All the pieces and parts connect. There isn't, there's not outliers that are all over the place. And then when it gets to a budgetary conversation, it's then how are you funding that and where are the priorities? So that's really the process we've been going through here.
Robin? I was ready to make a motion, but it looks like Jim might have another question. Go ahead. Okay.
Some of us have been on this board long enough to have seen enough acronyms to put together a book with the changes that come. But I saw two in this report that I really, really liked a lot. And I think they're going to become very critical components of the future students and the future staff. The development of the COPs and the LENS program just jumped off the pages at me. And kind of coupled with that, the process to have students individualize their own educational goals. So my hat's off to the Teaching and Learning Department, to Dr. Schatz, and I'm hopeful that all of the staff members involved in the teaching and learning end of things get recharged and come back again next year because you had one heck of a year here. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the final report for the 2013-14 operational plan as provided.
Second? Seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Final operational plan adopted. Thank you very much. I echo all of the comments about all the hard work and, oh my, what's up for next year? So you can rest for at least two weeks till next meeting. No, I'm just kidding. Architect RFP for the Warehouse Operations Center, Brock.
Madam President, Members of the Board, we're bringing to you for your consideration an authorization for us to move forward with putting out a request for RFPs, request for proposals for architecture services for the Operations Center. And typically, there's been a decision to move forward with a capital project before we go out for RFP. However, given the conversations we've had with the city, given that we touched on this in our long-range facility plan, I really do believe this is a matter of when, not if. And if it is, in fact, the timing that was originally talked about, which is by August of 15, we really would need to have a central kitchen constructed and testing by July of 15 to make sure that it is ready and fully operational for the school year of 15. That being the case, we really would like to start getting ahead of this project by at least putting out an RFP for architectural services, enter into a contractual arrangement with an architect with the pending project of a warehouse. And I would say, or excuse me, an operations center. And I would say, much like we talked about some time ago with the HVAC project, if for some reason this gets delayed, design work can be done and be laying in wait for when the project would come. So I do not believe that the district loses anything in getting a architect on board and then starting that design work because, again, I think this is a matter of when, not if. And so the sooner we could have this piece behind us and not have to wait, the better. So that's why we bring it to you at this point.
Linda?
Authorize administration to seek operational central
Second, someone?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, and now discussion. Chris?
Brock, I may have missed something, but there was a time when we discussed whether we would look for someplace that was suitable to be remodeled or repurposed or potentially all-new construction. Where are we at with that? I'm guessing if we're going to go into design work, we've narrowed down something.
Members of the board, Chris, we really have looked at a number of options. Dr. Schatz has worked with a local commercial real estate agent as well as working with the city. We have looked at areas where there's potential land to buy or facilities to rent. We've looked at existing facilities that might be available. And, you know, at this point in time, there isn't a place kind of ready to go right now. And really, the sheer size, it's 38,000 square feet behind us is what we have in that operational center. Might we decide to do something beyond that? It's possible. Those have been discussions we've had. And so some of the facilities that are currently listed are either not the size we would need or the real wild card here is the central kitchen. It's very difficult to retrofit everything that would be existing now to have a central kitchen operational in there. It may not be significantly more to build and then have everything centrally located. So yes, we've looked and we continue to look. If something comes up, we will look into that. We haven't shut the door on anything. The city has talked about some options that they might have available as well, and that's going to be all part of the negotiation once they get an appraisal and start coming to us with offers to purchase the property, and those will be considered at that time as well.
I may follow up. Can you just explain then, RFP for the design work, if we're not really sure where it's going to go?
Members of the board, Chris, we've taken two approaches to some preliminary work. One is if we were to do everything we would want to do, and discussed with planning that we might look at not only the operational center, but maybe combining that with the Crider Building on Fifth Avenue, get all of grounds, print shop, operations, get everything under one roof. That might look significantly different than simply take the operations center behind us, replicate it, and put it somewhere. So the design work will really, it will stem across a number of components. The first, due to cost of construction, being simply replace what's behind us, square footage to square footage. If we can trim it, we trim it. If we think we need more, for whatever reason, we do that. But get as close to what we have behind us, we start there. Then our thought would be that we would work with whoever Then, our thought would be that we would work with whoever it would be to say, design it in such a way that if we choose to do more, it's simple to do that as opposed to a different complexity. Part of that will be what's available for property to build on compared to what we have here. If you were to take the grounds building, that's at Crider on Fifth Avenue, that might look different. So it's going to start, the design work will be very similar regardless of if it's remodel or design because we know there's certain things, like the central kitchen, like what we need for the trades areas, that either retrofit or new construction is going to take very similar type of work. Does that make sense?
Paul, set the bar. Now I have to ask a whole bunch of questions. Last one, have we looked at property? Is there anything on the horizon there for this particular building?
I've looked at property. I can answer that one. And there's very limited areas in town that would fit the need for this. The one area that we have talked to the city about is city-owned piece, is on 40th Avenue, on the west side of the interstate south. Right now, that's the type of land we need. So when we do our beginning process with the city to negotiate, we may be seriously looking at that piece of land. But other than that, other parcels of land are very expensive. They're maybe not in the right location. They're in odd places. So we really have ruled out most of the things that are on the market right now to be feasible for us, as well as, like Brock said, any current warehouse-type buildings that are on the market that we've looked at just wouldn't be feasible. The fact of purchasing the building plus remodeling the building, all those things might end up costing you far more than it would be to build just from scratch. So we've looked at every option that we are aware of right now. Now, if something all of a sudden comes out of somewhere, we'd be willing to look at it, but we think we've exhausted most of those options here.
Linda?
What you're describing is an architect coming in and helping plan the program of the building. So at this point, yes, even though we're not designing a specific building, that next step requires an architect to kind of facilitate that. And often, the architect becomes part of the site selection process as well. Do you anticipate that?
That is possible. Haven't had those discussions internally, but certainly as we go through negotiation process, I think certainly that's possible because of the program they put together, what works best. So yes, that's, I would say, anything is open for discussion and possible at this point.
John?
Madam President, members of the Board, I've heard that the Woodrow Wilson School is available, perhaps on the market, again, being as Eldavron, Eldavron is, it appears not developing there. And maybe that would be something to put on our radar, that we repurchase it back for what we had sold it for, as a possible site to consider for that whole block.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? In that case, we have a motion on the table to authorize the administration to seek proposals for architectural services for the replacement of the Operations Center and Central Kitchen facility. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries? Thank you. Go to it, Brock. Our next item is the boundary adjustments. And I know that that's a lengthy presentation and discussion, and I don't want us to break that up in the middle of the discussion. So in that case, I would like us to take a five-minute break. Well, I guess it'll be six minutes if I can see correctly, if we come back for 6:30, and then Dr. Gross can get set up and ready for the boundary discussion. Thank you. Hello, all. We'll call this meeting back to order. And now, wisdom from Dr. Gross, boundary adjustments.
Hmm. I'll do my very best.
I'm trying to give you all different introductions, so...
Thank you very much. At the last school board meeting, I presented to you an elementary and a secondary boundary proposal. And during those conversations, you had different questions about what if we looked at a different set of scenarios? And what I've attempted to do tonight is to provide you the answer to those questions. So you have a packet that's in front of you. I do apologize that it is 39 pages in length, but again, what I wanted to do is provide you answers to those questions. If it was printed back-to-back, what hopefully will happen is when you open it up, you'll have the map on one side and then the data on the other so that as we go through this together, you can follow along. As we look at all of these boundary proposals, like I stated the last time we were together, to create these scenarios, we first took all of the students and placed them at their home schools. So the piece of software basically said, if I was a student who had petitioned to a different school, place them back at their home school so that we could build the scenarios around that. Now, once we have a set of new boundaries in place, we certainly would go through our existing petition process, so families would have the option to go through that process. But for the proposals, we built them that way so that we could say, here is a neighborhood, how many students live in that neighborhood, and so on. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do is just draw your attention to the set of elementary information. And on page one is the current map of our elementary boundaries. And just a quick reminder of that, to its left, if you printed side-by-side, or on page two, what you'll see is the information, the demographic information, of the students in our existing boundary scenarios. Again, the numbers that you see will be different than the numbers we present when we talk about how many students are at each of these buildings because the numbers I've presented to you in the past outside of boundary discussion include petition students. These are all students back to their home schools. But as you look at this demographic information, in our current scenario, you'll see Bennett Elementary would have 800 and, or I'm sorry, 586 students. Centennial would be around 600. I'm highlighting these because these are the ones that, as we get into the presentation, different scenarios impact, so I just want to give you that baseline information. Kennedy would have about 778 students. And then Lewis and Clark and Lincoln, about 540 students at each of those facilities. The last time we were together, I presented to you what's found on page three, which was this elementary proposal. Just to refresh your memory, there were three changes to the existing boundaries, and they are highlighted as the one, two, and three on the screen in front of you. The first one is the creation of that attendance area for the Ed Clapp School. The second, where the number two is, that's an area of town that originally was, or currently is at Lincoln Elementary. In this proposal, it would be assigned to Centennial. And then number three, which is on the screen in front of you, basically using the interstate and everything to the west of it to form the boundary for Kennedy Elementary. On page four, here is the information that I shared with you last time we were together and the impact that that scenario would have on the demographics in those different buildings. You would see that Bennett Elementary would have 581 students, a small change versus what we currently are at of about five students. Ed Clapp School would start about 440 students, 443. Kennedy would be reduced to around 490 students or so, a reduction of 291 students. Lewis and Clark would be at around 400 and Lincoln around 500. So you can see the reduction of the number of students there. And that's the information that I shared with you the last time we were together. A question arose in the last presentation about what if we looked at a different set of catchment areas for Ed Clapp School, one that did not go north of the Interstate 94, but instead went to the south and/or the east? So what I'd like to present to you tonight is Proposal Two, which is on the screen. What you will see, first of all, and I forgot to mention on the last slide, is the dotted lines that you see on the maps in front of you or on the screen are the existing boundaries, just to give you some orientation to our existing boundaries. But under Proposal Two, the first change would be to create this catchment area for Ed Clapp Elementary School, which would go from the interstate to 35th Avenue South and from then 29 to 22nd Street South. That would create that boundary or attendance area. The second change would be this area would be moved from the Centennial area to Lincoln, and that's an area from 32nd to 35th Avenue, from 22nd to 18th Street. The third change in this proposal would be this area in which this proposal would have this area going to, from Bennett to Centennial Elementary. That's from 40th to 52nd, from the interstate to 32nd or 25th Street. And then the same two other changes that were in the first proposal. Number four, that area going from Lincoln to Centennial. And number five, everything to the west of the interstate to Kennedy. So based on that proposal or those changes, on page six, you will see the data on how this proposal would create different groups of students. What you'll notice, first of all, is Bennett Elementary would change to about 470 students, so that would reduce that area by about 115 students. We know in that area of our town, there is potential for growth as many of the developments are happening there, so this would provide some of that room for growth. Centennial would go to about 564 students. That reduces it by about 35, 36 students. But in the map, there is an area that we moved from Bennett to Centennial where there is a new development happening right now. So this would allow for the students who will eventually be in those homes or in that development to go to Centennial. Ed Clapp School... Ed Clapp School would open with about 63 more students than that first proposal, but still under its capacity. Kennedy would remain the same, because the difference between Proposal One and Two, there are no changes to that Kennedy Elementary boundary set. And Lewis and Clark would be reduced by about 56 students to just shy of 500. And Lincoln would be reduced by a smaller amount, around eight students, to about 528 So that you could look at these proposals side by side, which was another question that I was asked the last time we were together. On pages seven and eight, you will see this set of data, where the first chart on the top of page seven takes each of our elementary schools and gives you its capacity. The capacity is determined by the total number of rooms that we use for classrooms, multiplied by 22 students, and that's based on what's in our long-range facility plan. Then what you see is a comparison of its capacity to what it would be in its current boundary set, again, if all petition students went back to their home school. And then the final column of the plus or minus above that capacity. And then finally, in that top set of data, what you will see is a comparison between Proposal One and Proposal Two, as it refers to the capacity of those buildings. And what I'd like to quickly highlight is, looking at Bennett Elementary, you'll notice in Proposal One, there's a capacity of about 100 students, but in Proposal Two, of over 200 students' capacity. At Centennial, you'll see the second proposal increases the capacity, or what's available, to almost 100 students at Centennial. Ed Clapp School would open a little bit larger under Proposal Two than it would under Proposal One, but under its capacity. Kennedy, because both of the proposals have the same boundary structure, it is the same, Proposal One to Proposal Two. Lewis and Clark and Lincoln, under Proposal Two, would both end up approximately 40 students below its, or their capacity, which would allow some room or relief to some of the larger buildings. And then as I go through the rest of the data, just so that you had a side-by-side comparison of the different proposals, the next set of data in the middle of page seven is a comparison of the free reduced lunch status of the different facilities. The lower set of data on page seven is the students who are receiving special education services, both the number and the percentage. And then finally, on page eight, what you'll see is a comparison of the current Proposal One and Proposal Two of the students who are receiving English language learning services. So what I wanted to do tonight is answer some of the questions that you asked about what if we looked at a different elementary proposal, and provide you the data in a side-by-side comparison, so that you could have that to review, to ask questions, and so on. And maybe I will stop there before I go to the middle school piece, and see if I can answer any questions you might have.
Linda.
Thank you. Looking at numbers, it's, you know, you can draw your own conclusions. When you look at the map, where some of these don't have quite as natural a boundaries as others, you know, like go right through a neighborhood, what's been your experience is, is something that goes along with what looks like a natural urban boundary, like an arterial, or whatever, here for people to accept, or do you not really notice that that's a thing?
We certainly strived in the past to use those natural boundaries whenever possible, but I think if you look at some of our other boundary areas further north, some do not use a major thoroughfare as its boundary. So it varies across our system. We certainly attempted to use those natural boundaries whenever we could, but again, we needed to fit that within the capacity of the building, the number of students it could serve, and that somewhat determined how far out we could go from that school to create those boundary areas.
Just before I recognize Chris, I neglected to mention that I was asked to please ask everyone to sit closer and speak into their mics, instead of sitting further back and away from their microphones. So, Chris?
I'm just looking, one of the purposes of this, I understood, was that Lewis and Clark is very crowded, and I'm not sure if that's because of the lack of ancillary space built into that school building with the population of students we have there, but it looks like in the current boundaries, there's 541 students. And Proposal Number One, it goes down to 394. And then in Proposal Number Two, it's back up to 528, so it looks as though we haven't really much space. 541 is what it is, then it was 394 in Proposal One. And then in Proposal Two, it's back up to 528?
485.
Oh, yep, I got the wrong paper underneath there. 485. Yeah, so that's two, maybe three classrooms. Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, I have more.
Okay, Rick and then Chris?
Sure, I just have a comment. I know one of the questions we asked about last time, and thanks for looking at this, Dr. Gross, was, we have a boundary, or, you know, we have got Prairiewood area, or that area north of I-94, that's going to be crossing I-94, and then right across the street from Ed Clapp, we've got people there going further south yet, and so to try to move those boundaries south, was the question, can we do that and still try to maintain relative numbers at the different schools? And it seems to me you've done that as well. Plus, I remember the comment Dr. Schottson made, it's worse, it looks like based upon growth, we're going to have to start moving, you know, looking at moving those boundaries further south anyway, sometime in the near future for Ed Clapp, just because where the growth is going to be, and filling up the other elementary. So, I just appreciate taking a look at that, and seeing if the numbers make sense and that type of thing, so thank you.
Chris?
So just to make sure I have this right, Dr. Gross, in elementary Proposal Two, we're really only taking away 56 students from Lewis and Clark. If I did that right. 541 now, and we go to 485.
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question was on Proposal Two, I think it was number two on the map, there's a little bit of Centennial that doesn't go to Ed Clapp, it goes now to Lincoln. Yeah. Can you explain that? I don't know why it doesn't stay at Centennial, since the kids already go there, or go to Ed Clapp. Curious.
Again, trying to look at natural boundaries, if you consider 35th Avenue a natural boundary, that would be the line that would be the lowest, or the southern boundary of Ed Clapp. It then would provide the southern boundary for Lincoln as well. So it was to try to create a natural boundary for those, and also then to bring an entire group or an area together. If we potentially left this area purple, that would be just one small set of, I think, two blocks, that would go to a different building from the students who happen to be to the east of them.
Thank you. Anyone with additional questions before Bob moves on? Okay?
Thank you very much. Then I'd like to take a look at some information about our middle schools. The last time we were together, I shared this with you.
I do have one, I just thought of a question before we move on, because it seems like when we move into the middle school one, you know, the only real question we had here was kind of this move on the elementary, is administration comfortable with Proposal Number Two with regard to the elementaries?
You want me to show my cards now?
Well, at least to get this far, because then we can get on to the next one.
Yeah. You know, we looked at that second proposal, and for some reasons, yeah, I think that's a better proposal than the first one. But again, you're not hopping over the interstate because of Prairiewood, but now you're hopping over 25th and 32nd. It's just, it's unavoidable. You're going to have to go somewhere. And so, but that is closer to the Ed Clapp School, so it makes good sense. And then those minor adjustments that Bob has made to try to balance those numbers does impact a few block areas, different schools, but we've looked at this thing over and over again, and I just don't know how else you can do it, with where the kids live and where the schools are at. So, Bob, you got something else, Bob?
In addition to that, as we look at Proposal Two, I think the potential that it provides at Centennial, it provides about 100 students in growth. So as the neighborhoods develop and grow around it, Bennett would have about 250 students potential for growth, and Kennedy would have about 250 students potential for growth. So I think Proposal Two sets us up for the future, as those developments grow and families move into those homes and apartments.
And that's a great point. It gives us more time before we have to do some kind of boundary adjustment again, because there's a whole new development going up off of 52nd and the interstate, and that one's rapidly moving along, and that's where that impact comes back, to Centennial, Bennett, those areas. And so this plan does give us more room in those, in those schools for that growth.
I'm sorry, Linda?
I'd just like to echo that, because I live around there now, and the speed at which those are coming online, both housing developments and a lot of massive apartment buildings, which is going to, I think, adjust the socioeconomic balance pretty dramatically. So I like seeing that much breathing space in...
Anyone else? Another chance before Bob goes on? Okay, go ahead, middle schools.
Thank you very much. On page nine, what you'll see is a map of our current middle school boundaries. And on page 10, then will, or is, the information about the demographics, again, sending all students back home who are on petition. What you'll see under that scenario is we have a variance or a difference between our smallest middle school to our largest of 278 students. What that does is it creates difficulties as we try to have three similar-sized middle schools across the system, as we try to have three similar sets of programming, if that is the teaming concept at the middle school and so on. So the proposals that we're going to share with you try to get us to three more equally-sized or similar-sized middle schools. What I shared with you last time is on page 11, and that was this proposal for a set of middle school boundaries. Just as a reminder, what we would suggest in Proposal One is Main Avenue would no longer be that northern boundary, but what we would do is follow 25th Street over Fifth Avenue, down University, and over 13th Avenue South as the northern boundary. That proposal then said, take the southern part of this boundary area and shift down to 32nd Avenue South, over to 18th Street where it currently is, down to 35th Avenue and over. And this was the data that I shared with you last time we were together, and the impact that that proposal would have. On my map? Yes, the color is correct, the label may be inaccurate, and I apologize. So that proposal brought the buildings closer in size, now a difference of about 93 students. But what you'll notice is that it brought the numbers at Discovery down, and the numbers at Ben Franklin up. The question arose the last time we were together about other districts, because that scenario would have changed our elementary feeder system to, are there other districts who do not have a true elementary feeder system? That one elementary school may feed two middle schools? What we did, and I apologize, this is not in your packet, is we made some phone calls to 13 different districts that we thought would be of similar size to Fargo, that would have at least two middle schools or two high schools. And then just provided you that information. And you can see from Anoka, or Bismarck, or Burnsville, whether or not in that far right-hand column, if they split their elementary schools as a feeder system. The question we asked was, do they or have they split an elementary population when entering middle school? And you can see the responses from those different districts. This data is just provided to you so that you can see that, yes, many districts do split that feeder system, where there are some that do not. But I just wanted to provide some information around that topic for you. Then, another question came up when we were together about what if, instead of the northern boundary shifting and splitting Jefferson and Clare Barton Hawthorne, what if we said that northern boundary was all of Jefferson to Ben Franklin? What would that do? Well, here's a map on page 13. On page 14, you can see the data in how that would affect the three middle schools. As you look at the information, it does provide or create Ben Franklin as our largest middle school, which it has the room for, and reduces the number at Carl Ben and Discovery. And lowers that difference of the largest to our smallest middle school of about 51 Somewhat difficulty of this plan, though, is if you follow the Jefferson boundary, which is here in red, and you look where Carl Ben Eilson Middle School is at, you will notice that you could potentially have students who are across the street going to a different middle school, as opposed to the middle school that is close to them. I just bring that to you and for your attention, as we look through this data. The second question that came up around this proposal was, okay, well, what if it's not Jefferson, but what if it's the Clare Barton Hawthorne neighborhood, that it in its entirety went to Ben Franklin? That's found on page 15. Page 16, you'll see the data, and it's similar to the last set of information, where the difference between the largest and the smallest middle school would be about 50 students. Ben Franklin would still be the largest middle school. But if you look at the map, again, of the boundary for Clare Barton Hawthorne, which is in red, you'll notice that Carl Ben Eilson is within that boundary area. So you would have students who are across the street going to a different middle school. Just wanted to answer the question, but also provide you that information as we move forward. So after that, the thought was, if we create a different set of elementary boundaries, that Proposal Two, where 35th Avenue South became that lower boundary for Ed Clapp School and some of the other areas, what if we use that as a southern boundary for our middle schools? Wanted to provide you some information around that, and that's called Proposal Two, and you'll find that on page 17. That would use the same northern boundary as the first proposal, but the southern boundary would be 35th Avenue South. What that does is create this set of information, the number of students at each of those facilities. The spread is a little bit larger, about 190 students between our smallest and our largest middle school. But the difficulty is that plan creates Carl Ben at about 909 students, which would require us to change some of the program that we do in that facility, where we would need to use some of the spaces that are now for some of the elective courses, and use that for a teen center, where potentially we might have to have those classes rotate from room to room. So the thought is, what if we still use that southern boundary, but instead now move Jefferson completely to Ben Franklin? This is Proposal Two A, and that's found on page 19. The data looks different, and you can see now the difference is about 117 students. Carl Ben Eilson is within its... Carl Ben Ielson is within its capacity range. But again, this is back to that same scenario of where that boundary is, and students who may live very close or across the street going to a different middle school. And just so that we had a comparison, I also ran the data. If that southern boundary was 35th Avenue, what if Clare Barton Hawthorne went to Ben Franklin? Again, here is the data. You will see that the spread, or the difference is about 115 students, similar to the last proposal. But just like in Proposal One B, if you look at the attendance area for Clare Barton Hawthorne, Carl Ben Ielson Middle School is within that boundary area. So finally, what I wanted to do is provide you a side-by-side comparison of all of those proposals. That's found on page 23. What you see is, the first column is the current students. The first set of data is students on free and reduced lunch. The second is students receiving special education services, and the last would be our English language learner students. And then across the page, what you'll see is Proposal One, One A, One B, Two, Two A, and Two B, laid out side by side, so that you could compare those one against the other. I can find them very quickly, and I will get them before the end of the evening.
Um, I can understand the difficulty of dealing with where Carl Ben sits and trying to make the numbers work out. Would it be possible, and maybe this comes up later, if, if we included in the Clare, or in the Carl Ben attendance area, those couple blocks slightly to the west, so it doesn't feel like you're going across town when you live so close? But then, when it comes to high school time, I mean, does middle school attendance have to then follow high school, or can we tinker with high school boundaries? If you, if you go to Carl, Carl Ben, I mean, if you go to Ben Franklin, if you go to Carl Ben, do you have to go to south, or could you go to north after middle school?
I think anything is possible. We could do it that way.
But you just turn pale a little bit.
I think part of the process is if a student at a middle level begins to participate in any of the co-curricular activities, they begin to create that connection with not only the middle school, but the high school that it serves. Although, a student could participate at one high school if they were a, a middle school student, and then once they reach ninth grade, switch over to a different high school, that might be difficult.
Yeah, I mean, may, maybe that area ends up to be pretty, pretty spongy with petitions.
Yep.
Works better if you have two high schools. Some, it's a serious, some cities have three middle schools, two high schools, one splits. That, that is common in that kind of scenario. Grand Forks is an example. Schrader Middle School and Grand Forks, half the kids go to Red River, half go to Central. And, and before that, before the flood, they had what they called South Middle School, uh, which was in the central part of the city, and the same thing happened there, too. But there's two high schools. When you get to three high schools, it gets a little bit more difficult, and especially with the scenarios we're looking at. So.
Rick?
Dr. Rose, could you put up Two A?
The full map. So when you looked at this one, if I recall, the difference is about 100, and was it 117 students, maybe? Was the spread, if you go to your stat sheet now? 117 students. And then, when I looked at the rest of the demographics on that as well, I'm looking at the free and reduced, it's, it's much more even between north and, north and south, I believe, on the free and reduced, 37 and 39. And Davies is always gonna be off right now, because it's fairly new area. And I look at the ELL population as well, and that's much more even compared to the rest of your comparisons up there. I think it's like, again, probably the, one of the most even distributions of the ELL students at that point. And so I, and I mean, I know there's other issues with, with Two A, but when I was looking at this, I'm looking at the spread, looking at the, the distribution of free and reduced and the distribution of ELL. And it seems to me this one, if, for one factor, anyway, for socioeconomic and demographic purposes, seems to fit the bill pretty well. But I know you've got the whole location of, again, Carl Ben, but it seems Carl Ben's is issue regardless of which way we go. I mean, as far as trying to even out the, the different schools. So anyway, just an observation of that.
We'll go with Jim, Robin, and Linda.
It isn't just Carl Ben. If, if you could put the map back up for Two A, whoever is in that little brown corner right to the left of Carl Ben is a block away from South High, too. So now, you're a block away from South, you're a block away from Carl Ben, and we're gonna tell you to go to Ben Franklin and North High. So while the demographics work really good, the geographics are really poor here, at least from my perspective.
That's what I struggled with throughout this, when I studied all of these. I mean, do we have a good demographic mix? But then, some of our lowest income students might have to travel the furthest, where they could have walked to school much easier, and that really impedes for a lot of them. A lot of them, I know that I work with those kids, they don't have the parents at home that are, or even have cars. And so, the closer we can keep them to their geographic location throughout this, it is very pervasive for me that my thought was, we need to keep them closer to their geographic school, if, if I have to consider one heavier than the other.
Linda?
At the risk of making a whole bunch of people mad at me, which, if you could put the map Two B back up, and I'm wondering if you tried this one. Okay. Right now, Hawthorne, Clare Barton are all going north, because that was what we requested you to look at. But in this scenario, did you ever try using University as a boundary, where you would end up splitting Clare Barton Hawthorne, but I think the neighborhoods are a little more cohesive on one side of University or the other? I mean, maybe it would be slightly less painful. And then have all of Jefferson go north, where you now have people within geographic proximity of Carl Ben and South, all of Jefferson goes north. Did you try that one, or how would that one work out?
We did look at that as well. Unfortunately, I don't have all of that to share with you tonight. But in that area, I'm going off my memory right now. I believe there were about 50 middle school-age students, and I believe around 60 high school-age students. I will double-check that information and get it to you. So if you look at the data on the next page, that's how you would have to modify that information.
We have any other questions at this point, or do we go on to the high school? I'm sure you'll have more questions once we go through the middle-high school piece, if you want to finish that part. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you very much. As you continue through the packet, on page 25, what you'll see is our current high school boundaries. This is what I shared with you the last time. On page 26, you'll see then the information. And currently, if, if all students go back to their home school, what you would see is a difference of about 241 students, from North High School being our smallest high school, to Davies being our largest. Then, what I shared with you at the last meeting was what's found on page 27, and that is this proposal, or Proposal One. Same boundaries as the middle school Proposal One, on the north and the south. And the data that I shared with you last time looked like this, where that proposal would create a difference of about 131 students. But what you would notice is, North High now would become the second-largest high school, and Davies would become the smallest. Then, just to answer the same questions, what if Jefferson went to north, or that neighborhood went to north, instead of splitting those neighborhoods? That's found on page 29, that map. And here is the data. You would see that you would have a spread of about 163 students. North High School becomes the largest again, and Davies would become the smallest.
Bob, when we refer to Davies becoming the smallest in any of the various scenarios, but the reality is that the potential for growth is much heavier in that area. So five years down the line, that might be totally reversed.
That is correct. Then, so that you had the information to compare, I ran the scenario found on page 31. If the Clare Barton Hawthorne neighborhood went to North High School, page 32 gives you that information, a difference of about 170 students. And then finally, there are three more scenarios. What if we use that new southern boundary of the elementary Proposal Two, 35th Avenue South, as the southern boundary, but left the northern boundary the way it was in that proposal I shared with you last time we were together? That's found on page 33. The data would look like this. You would see a difference of about 300 students, with South High School becoming the largest at this time. And then, using that same southern boundary, but moving Jefferson to North High School, on page 35. Here's the data. You would see that now you have a spread of about 250 students. North and South would be approximately the same size. And Davies, as you can see, that would be at 950 at this time. And then lastly, the proposal would be, what if we use that southern boundary and Clare Barton Hawthorne neighborhood went to North High School? That's found on page 37. And on page 38, you will see that information, a difference of about 260 students. And you can see the rest of the information. Lastly, on page 39, the last page of this packet, what you'll see is a similar set of comparisons to what I provided you for the middle school. The first column is the current information on free and reduced, number of special ed students and percentage, and our English language learners, and then a side-by-side comparisons from Proposal One to Two B, so that you had that information to review. I would ask, or try to answer any questions that you might have.
It's a lot of information, I'm sure, for all of us to digest, and even with the comparisons, to be clear what's what. But with the new elementary boundary proposal that you came with tonight, when you translate that into middle and high school attendance areas, are other elementary schools being split from their attendance areas, or not?
It would depend on which of the middle school, high school proposals may be accepted. If you applied the first middle school and high school proposal that I shared with you to that second proposal of elementary, you would have four elementary buildings that would have a split. Jefferson, the Clare Barton Hawthorne neighborhood, the Ed Clapp neighborhood, school, and Lincoln. So, again, applying Proposal One to the second elementary proposal, that's what it would look like.
Okay. So I just wanted everybody to understand that, too, because I think one of our concerns previously was the splitting of an elementary attendance area to the middle and high schools. And I want people to think, as they ask additional questions or make comments, which are your hierarchy of things that are most important? Is it, just for example, that the Prairie Wood folks don't cross the interstate to go to an elementary school? Is it that elementary school attendance areas stay uniform as they go to a middle and high school? Is the socioeconomic the most important? And, and keep that in mind, because unfortunately, we can't solve all of those issues in one plan. And I don't think the intention is to approve anything tonight, but to give Bob additional information and questions, in case there's something else we need to know. But they're very important questions for all of us, and I really want you to think about those things as you ask for additional information, and as we plod through what the best scenario really is for all of the kids in our district. So with that being said, additional questions or
John, and then Jim?
Madam President, members of the board, I'm, I'm going to make some observations with some implied questions. And, and it's more just a matter of, of drilling a little bit deeper into the scenarios you're presenting. One of my general areas of interest is, I liked the idea of the demographic heat maps. And I'm curious the implication of scenarios as they reflect populations current and projected. So if, if we can at some point narrow down and start visually seeing, rather than big consolidated blocks of numbers, also, at the same time, seeing the concentrations of the students relative to current proposals or suggested proposals, or, or long-term proposals. The, the other question, comment in my mind is, I think that another avenue of concern I have is, how many years ahead are we looking? And, and how that would affect our, our decisions today? If, if we have various options, and various demographics, and various concentrations of students, and there's a very, a significant quantifiable variance into how far one of, or the other will go, with the least disruption in, in, in future boundaries and population shifts, I would be curious to see that as we start focusing in on our, our, our final choices. And then I'll add a, a sub-letter A to that. And that would be looking at the implication at some point of the pocket school concept at the Eagle Center, relative to, relative to the concentrations of the people, moment present and the future, with heat maps, and, and how they're now, and how they're projected. And also, how many years ahead the scenarios will be if we were to have a pocket school in the Eagle Center in, in our future.
Did you have anything you wanted to respond, or just let go on to Jim?
We can certainly provide that information. And we would also be certainly willing and able to provide some of those scenarios of what it would look like if we created another buildings within our system. We have done some of that review already, to see the impact it might have on future boundaries. Some of the difficulty is not knowing exactly how many new families will be moving into our community in some of the new developments. So that will modify those in the future, but we certainly have looked at that.
Dr. Schatz, and then Jim.
The interesting thing, John, is that most of the plotting has been done now on the south end. That is around Davies, is around Kennedy, and all those areas. Now, it continues to grow further south. When you get past 64th, there's new things that will be coming up, and on the west side of the interstate. But we have a pretty good handle now with the city planning office as to where the housing's gonna be, and what it's gonna look like. I think that every scenario that we're looking at, I'm looking at five to six years, of where we would have stability for about that period of time, until you're gonna start seeing Kennedy fill up again, where you're gonna see Bennett get overpopulated, where you're gonna see Discovery become overpopulated, and where you're gonna see Davies get over that 1,300 mark. But I always preface everything I say about all these plans, is economics plays a big part in this. And if for some reason development slowed down, or stopped, or whatever it might be, then of course, you adjust your plan. But I don't think you can build much more capacity into what's been plotted. So I feel pretty comfortable with where we're at. It's not a perfect science. Bob does have what we call scatter maps with where these kids live, and that's what we've been looking at when we put these together. We can easily bring that to you, but it's kind of hard to do on paper. It almost has to be interactive on the screen. So... So, if we were to do something like that at the next board meeting, we'd have to have Bob there, kind of pulling up those catchment areas, and then popping in what it is you want to see, and then putting that up on the screen, because it's a very interactive system, so. But I just, I think overall, we're looking through that five to six-year period of time, so.
Jim?
A couple of thoughts, and as long as you got this color printer. Another scenario to look at. So I'll start with the other scenario, and then I have a couple observations I think I want to get on the table. If you would go to High School Proposal 2B, that map, when you get a chance, what I would like to see is the numbers, if we take the Hawthorne Clare Barton neighborhood that is west of 13th Street, and send that to South, where it currently goes, and to CBE, so they can walk to their neighborhood school. West of University, yep. And then, because I'm concerned that we are going to be on this map pushing CBE over its capacity, to keep it at capacity, take out the western edge of the Ed Clapp elementary area and send it to Davies. So, if I could point it out, take this area back to CBE and South, and to the extent that we overflow CBE, pull this area down to Davies. Whatever amount of it you need to take. And I'm just curious what that will look like, and it might even balance socioeconomic a little better for us. Yeah, yeah, they'd go to Discovery, and they'd ultimately end up at Davies. I think it's important, though, because I had a lot of people asking me questions through email or calls, as I'm sure we all have, that we make sure we understand why we're doing all of this. Part of it is, we have to create an attendance area for a new elementary building. And that's an easy thing to do, whether we take option one, option two, that's the easy part of this. Where I think a lot of neighborhoods are going to struggle, where I think we're going to struggle, is with the secondary building issues, the middle school and high school. And I don't think we've really explained to the community that what we're really trying to address is making sure our educational opportunities at Ben Franklin and North are sustainable. Because absent doing these changes, our projected numbers up there tell us we will not have the numbers of students we're going to need for a number of elective courses, APs, whatever they may be. So, it isn't just about building capacities. I get that. I get the fact that we know we're going to have more kids to go to Davies. It's about maintaining educational quality in the north end of Fargo. And absent some really creative procreation north of Main Avenue, we are going to have to do something different, I think. And I think that message needs to start getting into this boundary discussion, that this isn't just about filling up brick and mortar for the sake of filling it up. It's about creating the right environment for the educational opportunities for our high school and middle school students in North Fargo. Because, quite frankly, we have no issues today in the middle part of town. We've got pretty stable attendance at CBE and South. We've got declining attendance at our middle school and high school up north. We have expanding attendance out south. And unfortunately, probably the most stable part of our community is the part we're going to be rocking the boat on to try and adjust these issues. And until we get that into this dialogue, I don't think people are really going to understand, in part, why we're having these discussions. Just an observation on my part.
Thank you, Jim. Robin?
Completely agree with you, Jim. I think that we cannot lose sight of the fact that Davies continues to grow, and it's easier just to leave all the kids in South. And if we continue to let that, if we continue to let the current population stay in South, and we continue to need to shift Davies' kids to South, then South becomes another mega high school. So, I agree with you completely on the academic piece at North, but I also am hearing from middle school, mid-town parents to say, North High isn't my problem. And, but we need to look at it as a district. But I also want those parents to understand that Davies' population is going to have to shift to South, and we don't want that to be a mega high school. Again, we were there, some of us have been on the board for 10 years, remember that, when there were 500 students, 532 in a class that I handed to Plovis out to. So, I think that's another piece that parents need to be reminded of.
Chris?
I don't remember who brought it up, but it was part of the discussion last time, or I may have read it somewhere, but someone talked about, rather than rocking the boat in midtown and having those folks sort of take one for the team, that if Davies were to become over-enrolled, that new students would get bused north. And because it's pretty stable in the midtown area, north is decreasing, south is, far south is increasing, is that an option that anybody would be willing to look at? I'm not advocating, I'm just throwing it out there, because we're assuming that because midtown is closer to north, those are the students that should move. And maybe it would be more expensive to transport those students, maybe it's negligible, the cost to that, but I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't be on the table. Just curious.
Robin?
I would only entertain that discussion if it was a temporary fix. The outcry that we've had from parents in the past, prior to my being on the board, from being bused far south to north was overwhelming. Hence the reason some of those new schools were built on the south side. It's a complete Band-Aid, temporary maybe, but the fallout is greater if you transport that far. And it takes quite a time to get from 70th Avenue South to 19th Avenue North, last time I drove it, or vice, both ways.
Linda?
I, I agree with Jim, and that's why I had suggested, you know, the same thing in that Clare Barton Hawthorne. I think, to expand on that just a little bit, one of the issues we have in this town, I guess it's a good problem to have, but, you know, people are so, have such allegiance to, I mean, especially, well, not just elementary, but the high schools, too. And to the point at which, you know, that Main Avenue border has just been there since there was Fargo Central. And it's such a part of Fargo identity, this, you Northsiders, and, yeah. But I think you're absolutely right. We need to, yes, Fargo North is Clare Barton Hawthorne parents' problem. It's all of our problem, because we are one school district, we're not three school districts. And I'll never forget the time when I was sitting on a bench when my daughter was playing middle school basketball, and that's the last time we were kind of, they were playing with the boundaries and found out that our kids might go to North. And I remember saying to the parents next to me, "Oh, looks like our kids might go to North, no big deal, that's a good school." And they literally slid down the bench away from me, you know, like we were sending our kids to Bangladesh. I mean, when we talk about taking one for the team, that's even the wrong message. You don't take one for the team by going to this high school instead of that one, because, you know, and I know allegiance, my kids went to schools here, too. But I think it is a messaging thing, that we are one district, we can't pick up the high schools and move them, and we have, we have a responsibility that all three high schools remain viable and vibrant.
Jim, but I just wanted to say, back to the, what I was trying to instruct all of you, is that it is a complex problem. And the bottom line is, the best decision for all the kids in the entire district. That's why we're here, not for one, one pocket over another. And sometimes, one pocket isn't happy because that's what makes it best for the whole district. But I think it's a very difficult decision, and we have to keep that in mind. Jim?
I want to speak to your question, Chris, or idea. No, I know, I understood. I was on the board, as was Paul, I believe, a few others, when we were attempting to bus students from what's now the Kennedy neighborhood up to the north side. And remarkably, as soon as Kennedy showed up, all kinds of kids came out of the basement they were hiding in, because parents just flat-out wouldn't do it. So, I don't really believe that's a viable solution we should spend much time on. I don't really like any of these approaches that we're having to face, but the reality is, we have to do something to permanently address a stable population, at least in the parts of town that aren't going to be able to grow, which would be the central and north part of the city. There's really no huge amount of development that's going to happen, residentially speaking, anywhere close to North High, or really South High for that matter. So, I would be more inclined to support a quasi-permanent, maybe more than five years when it comes to the secondary systems, solutions for those buildings than I would a busing solution. I think busing is a temporary thing that has to be done from time to time, just because you have no choice. But I don't really see that as a catchment area solution that works well. Not saying it can't be done, just, I'm not sure I could support it.
Anyone else wish to, John?
Madam President, members of the board, I just think that Jim is hitting the nail on the head. And I'm going to remind us of the city maps that go down to 124th Avenue South. What on earth are we going to do then?
Well, I think this is, I'm guessing, been very helpful, again, for you guys. Do either of you have any questions that you have unanswered, that you want somebody to address or comment on at this, I mean, I know, there's probably, you know...
Well, it's kind of like a vortex, you know, you throw it all in, and then you see where it all lands, so. We need direction at this point, because, you know, we can come back with another 35-page document, and it's just going to get more confusing as we go. So, we need a little bit more focused direction, so that whatever we bring to you next time, it's what you're looking for, so.
Okay, let's do Rick, and then Chris, and then go on.
Back to your comments about the educational process, I agree 100%, you know, that's what we're really looking at, trying to accomplish. The geographics are what they are. I mean, that's where schools are at. It doesn't make it easy to make, it makes it easy to make geographic decisions when we start talking about attendance areas. I am really concerned when we take a look at page 38, if you wouldn't mind turning to that. And we talked about when we built Davies, it was talked about in the community, about this inner-city school concept, and the concerns that the people in the community had with regard to that, and we assured the community that's not going to happen. And when we look at page 38, which is basically 2B, Clare Barton Hawthorne to the north, is probably, if I could be off on this a little bit, but probably the worst socioeconomic demographics of all the options that we have to look at. At South High, we've got 40% free and reduced, the next nearest is less than 20%. And the ELL student population is, almost all of them are at South High, with the exception of about 44. We've got 180 ELL students at South, 23 at North, and 21 at Davies. And granted, socioeconomic and demographics is not the only thing we need to look at. We need to look at opportunities at the different schools that we provide, and what kind of opportunities are we providing for all the kids at all these different schools? We don't change our high school boundaries very often in this district. And when we recognize, at least what I recognize, as a significant change in the socioeconomic mix, if we go with a 2B option, this is going to be with us for a long time. And as Jim said, and I think most of us agreed, Central City's pretty stable. It is what it is, it's not going to change a lot. And we see, you know, South will be changing, obviously, or far south will change somewhat, and the north side is not going to change a lot either. So, I would be very concerned, this is, as a, and I don't have kids in school, but as a community member, what message are we sending when we take a look at changing these boundaries to create such an unbalanced socioeconomic mix within our high schools? And that's something the future board can take a look at, administration can take a look at, and we can justify all the geographics we want, depends on what we are looking for, and yet we bus kids, or we're going to have kids going past our neighborhood schools. And we do now, basically. I mean, we have kids across the street, or two blocks down from Ed Clapp will be going to a different school, we have that now. It's just one of, I think, what we want to focus on. But I'd be very concerned when we take a look at that page 38. And do we, can we do anything different? And we're not going to fix everything, but I think we need to be at least aware of the fact that what we're doing with an option like 2B is not, we're not improving it at all, we're actually increasing the disparity, I think, in the mix of the population in the district, so.
Chris?
I kind of want us to go back to the, to the plan that the administration brought us, because I can see why you came up with that. It makes perfect sense, because imagine living across from, living in the Jefferson catchment area, across from, down the street from South, across from Carlin Ileson, and then going north. And we had such a great presentation from the Jefferson team about their brilliant pride, and it just, it feels not right to do that, but when I look at the data, it, on paper, it looks like that's absolutely the right thing to do. But I also have trouble with Clare Barton Hawthorne. My family lives there, and we're perfectly fine. I've said before that my husband would be thrilled if his children were Spartans, because he grew up going to the north side. And we, we want every one of our schools to be any place, any family would be thrilled to send their kids, we just do. But demographically, it just doesn't make any sense how that shakes out. And honestly, I'm, I have no idea what to do. I'm just going to say it, it's hard. This is probably the hardest thing we as board members do. And I think that the, I know you've put blood, sweat, and tears behind this, and the proposal that you came up with was one that was very well researched, and there was, I see even more now why there was such a good reason behind it. I don't know what the answer is. I like 2A, but I know that logistically, that creates problems. And I wouldn't want to live across the street from Carlin Ileson and go to Ben Franklin. So, that's not helpful, but that's where I'm sitting right now.
Robin?
I agree with Chris. I think that the initial presentations by administration were most favorable to me. Of course, this board has to vet everything through, and you have to put up with this. But I want to commend Chris on bringing up, and maybe I'll have tomatoes thrown at me now, the busing issue, because that was as close to we got as talking about the economic feasibility of the quality education we want to maintain for our students. And that's been, we all know why we're here, we're here for the kids, but we also have a responsibility to our taxpayers to do this in a cost-deficient manner. And that would be the only thing that I heard in this discussion tonight, that was, that's what, another thing we're hearing from some of our taxpayers. So, although I don't support it, I think that that's one component that's missing. And that being said, when we talk about having some targeted populations that might have some extra special needs, maybe this is an opportunity to leverage some of those dollars and target them more specifically to some of those communities. And I don't know what the studies and the research shows for that, but maybe we'd be able to leverage our dollars more effectively if we did have some higher populations of ELLs in a school. I don't have the answer. Again, I like Chris, this is a very difficult decision for board members, but I tend back towards the first, the first presentations by administration.
Jim?
Try, at least from my perspective, to help you narrow the workload. I actually think the revised elementary attendance area that had Prairiewood continuing to Lewis and Clark, built the capacity out south that we needed, didn't upset any demographic number that I could see on the map whatsoever. So, I, at least in one board member, am very comfortable with that revised elementary attendance area. I think when we see the numbers on my little change to that one map, we're going to see that that's going to bring the socioeconomic numbers pretty much in line with where they are right now, and perhaps even skew them a little better, because it's going to take a lot of that low-income population... a lot of that low-income population that's just to the west of the Bluemont Lakes neighborhood out of the south population and put it over to Davies and Discovery to get us back that balance that Rick was talking about. So, I don't know, I, maybe, you know, from my perspective, I think the work in front of us is on the middle school and high school, not so much on the elementary, but that's just me.
Linda?
So, are you suggesting a high school proposal to see then? Are you asking them to come back with that adjusted high school? Okay, because that would have been, yeah, okay.
Rick?
I agree with Jim. I think if we can get a consensus on the elementary proposal, the updated one, I think that at least alleviates part of that issue, and then administration can go forward with the middle school and high school pieces and take further look at that. But it'd be nice if we could at least arrive at a consensus with that piece.
So, just, this is not a vote, this is a consensus. To just get a sense, do we have folks who feel that this favorable towards the second proposal that was brought to us today, the new elementary proposal? Do we have favor, that we, to give Bob the go-ahead to use that as the base for the elementary and to make some of the modifications to the middle high school as our final alternative for next time?
Maybe you can ask if anyone's really opposed to that, that might be the best way.
Okay, how about that? Is anybody really opposed to that? Opposed to Bob using today's updated elementary attendance area and modifying the elementary proposal to, using that as the base for the elementary divisions, and then coming back with some modifications to the middle and high school attendance areas with Jim's suggestions and having heard the comments that have been made today? Okay, so, we're all in consensus about that. And I would ask that when you, I'll give you a chance, just let me say, I would also like to see next time, in words, not so much in numbers, if possible, the true pros and cons of this versus this. In other words, for example, Rick pointed out that one proposal skewed the socioeconomic, and that doesn't make much sense to any of us. So, if hypothetically, that's what you see when you run the next piece, I want us to be taught this skews the demographics in this area, you know, disproportionately. I want to know that this gives us more breathing room at schools X, Y, and Z, and, you know, so it's spelled out, because we've all gone through this. It's really hard, I think, for us to keep reiterating it and remember all the details. And if we could have a simple pro and con, or, you know, it doesn't have to be pro and con, but the differences, if that's it. And John, and then Paul, you had your hand. John?
Madam President, members of the board, what occurs to me is, I think we're getting a lot closer, and we're getting closer, but I would almost recommend that we go back to one more working session of the planning committee with administration. And we agree, kind of settle on this proposal number two for elementary, start playing the different scenarios out. Part of what I see coming is a time clock that we only have a few more meetings of the current board. And I would hate to have this in limbo going into July's reorganization meeting and have it, the apple cart upset, and I think the families need to know. And so, that would be my recommendation, is we've got somewhat of a consensus of the board, that we schedule a planning committee meeting. I know we're up to our ears in the budget, but this is an absolute priority.
John, I'm going to interject and say that I think that this is an issue that every single board member around the table needs to have input on. And I hear you, and I understand what you're trying to say. And I'm the first one who pushed for this, because for exactly the same reasons, wanting this discussion to start before too late in the year. But I think that we're going to let Dr. Gross do his magic, and if it means a longer board meeting next time and the time after that, we still have three more meetings. And I'm hoping that, I feel unless there's somebody else who has a strong disagreement with me, I think everybody around the table wants to be part of this discussion, and whatever happens at planning is going to be reiterated here. And so, I appreciate your thoughts, but I think...
And might I continue, Madam President? Everybody's welcome to committee meetings. And committee meetings is where you can think more out of the box, where you can do, you can drill in, and I'm just trying to help us get to a consensus sooner. The committees are where this work really happens. I don't think we will disrupt the process. So, again, you might disagree, but that's my recommendation.
Is there a consensus that, Linda?
Did these go through planning?
May I address that?
Yeah, let Dr. Gross, I mean, Dr. Schatz...
Yeah, I asked Bob to run it by planning, because we want to know if we were on the right path. And so, we have been running it by planning just to get a sense from people, but then we're bringing the full discussion to you. And everything that's been discussed at a board meeting is in much more depth than what we've probably done at planning. But it's at least a chance to at least get a sense initially if we were going down the right path. What I'm really interested in is, we can come back with some changes has been asked for at the secondary level, but we're prepared to probably come to you with a recommendation too, so that we can at least put something in front of you. You can look at the changes, but then we'll come with a recommendation. If this is what you want, then you can at least have that in front of you, and then we go from there. So, you tell me if that's what you want, we can certainly do that.
I, go ahead, John.
It's gone through planning once, Linda. The new reiterations did not go through planning. That's my, that's all I'm just looking at. I think we can help us get there and have us all land on the same page. That's what my goal is. I think we're all on that desire, or share that desire.
Rick?
It seems to me we've gathered a consensus on the elementary proposal number two. So, I'm going to suggest the administration take that and go with it on that. On the middle school and high school, you know, there's really, when I look at that, there's two issues, well, there's more than two issues, but two more significant issues that have to be balanced, and that truly is going to be a decision by somebody. And it's going to be either, it's going to be the geographics and the socioeconomics. I mean, that's just going to have to be balanced, and I'm not sure, honestly, John, that planning is going to do any better job than the board's going to do on that. And I understand bringing it back, but I think we have to take a look at the big picture and say, hey, these are the two issues. Administration has to weigh it in, they've got the numbers in front of them, the same numbers I've looked at. They know, they can see what each of the proposals does to the geographics and the socioeconomics, and let administration come with a recommendation after running some of the generations that Jim talked about and say, we're comfortable as a district making this proposal, and here's the impacts it has on those two items. I'm okay with that, instead of coming back to planning, truly am, and I'm not sure planning would add a lot more to that discussion than this whole board might, but that's...
Linda?
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry, he was there, and I apologize, Linda. Paul?
I was going to say two things. First of all, under elementary proposal two, Kennedy population moves from 778 down to 487. How will that affect the addition we put on at Kennedy? Because as near as I can tell, that should be 13 classrooms.
The seven includes the kids that are in the Ed Clapp building right now. The Eagles, excuse me, the future Ed Clapp kids that are not physically in the building.
But we don't have 778 in Kennedy.
In the physical building, no.
I thought we had close to 700 though, don't we?
That would be any of the students who are in that attendance area currently. Part, right now, we have students in kindergarten first and second who are in the Bluemont area who are being served at Eagles Center.
But if you went to Kennedy on any given day, would we not have close to 700 students in there?
Not this current school year.
Okay, we're a long ways away from that.
Do you have the numbers? We would not, because again, we have three sections of kindergarten first and second being served at Eagles.
Sure, okay, well, that's fine. My second comment is, just speaking as one board member, but something that I said a meeting or two ago that I think still is valid and we ought to consider, and that is that I don't think we should allow, whatever we want to call it, demographics or socioeconomic situations or free and reduced lunch to become as heavily weighted as it sometimes is in our discussion, because simply by putting it that way, it seems to indicate that there is some difference among those students. And I'm not so sure that there is a difference among those students, they're all students. It would be similar to saying, well, we need to have a certain number of blond-haired kids at one school, and, you know, there's too many blondes at this school. I just think that we should not put so much emphasis on socioeconomic, free and reduced lunch, or whatever we choose to call it in this discussion.
Linda, and then Bob.
Just to go off both of you, when we weigh these issues, like you were talking about socioeconomic, ELL, and you're weighting a little more, Paul is suggesting we weight a little less, I think we have to remember that that is not the overriding concern of most parents. Like I said, maybe clumsily earlier, is that they base their loyalty to their school on emotion, family history, expectations, all those things. They couldn't probably give, you know, two beans for the balance that we're trying to achieve. But I'll also say that poverty is not like blond hair, and it's been documented over and over again that in order to give all students the best possible quality education, a better mix is better.
Thank you. I'm going to let, just so you all know, Bob have the last word on this right now. Go ahead.
I just wanted to answer the question. Thank you, Rachel, for getting the data. Right now at Kennedy, we have 587 students, at Eagles, 148. For next school year, we're planning 575 students approximately at Kennedy and 178 students at Eagles.
Thank you. Okay, we've had a lot of excellent discussion. I believe the administration has direction, what they need to determine for us for next time. And we will, if you can, bring your documents next time so that they don't have to be reprinted again, because there might be some reference to these maps and things as well. We have several other items, and normally, I would let you have a break, but I need to leave on time, or whatever that means. So, I'm not letting you have a break now. We're going to try and get through these last items, if you don't mind. Robin, are you ready to share, or did you not retrieve your documents?
I was ready, and my documents are sitting in City Hall. So, I'll wing it a little bit for my NSBA sharing. A lot of the sessions that I went to were covered by various board members, but what I remember from my notes is, was an overwhelming, overwhelming atmosphere of how many project-based, how much project-based learning is going on, particularly at the high school level, and how it keeps students engaged much more than the standard deliver and, you know, the curriculum that we, that we're used to. And the cross-curriculum was amazing to me. Within that project-based component, there was also a preponderance of community partnerships that I don't think that we leverage, somehow, we don't leverage as well here in our area. Businesses were very involved in the educational funding. In the past, and I joke about this kind of tongue-in-cheek, whenever we've tried to partner and leverage community dollars or business dollars, it gets us into sometimes some unsavory, it hasn't treated us well in the past. But I don't want us to shy away from that. A lot of money is being pumped into K-12 education in a lot of communities, and something I don't know if we can do here, but worth looking at. And my third comment would be 21st century skills and 21st century learning is almost kind of becoming a passe term. And even though I know we think about critical thinking and collaborative and everything like that, it's drilling down more into that. And to me, it makes more sense when I explain that to how we deliver curriculum, 21st century skills, yes, we're there, but what do they really mean? And I think the more we can drill down on that message with our parents and our teachers as far as, what is it, critical, and I'm going to lose it without my notes here, you know, there are those four components that are really focused upon, but if we can somehow message our literature and the way we speak to the public, I think it would serve us well. Sorry, I can't go more into depth, but I'll tell you why I can't when I share my comedian liaison reports, so.
How would you like to do that then?
Okay, sure. I just came, at 5 o'clock was a city commission meeting, and the Fargo Youth Initiative made their annual presentation to the city council, and they do this, as I mentioned, on an annual basis, talking about their connections to, they are the liaison between the students and the community and the city commission, and they continue to do a great job. They are out surveying students as far as what they want to see in the city, and of course, everybody wanted one of those trampoline parks, and when all of a sudden that showed up, FYI team thought that they were magic, but that's not really where it came from. But it's a great opportunity for our students to engage in the civic aspects of Fargo. And very good for the city to recognize its students, because they have such a high population within our, within our community. Communications did not meet this last month, but we will proceed with our meeting next month. We did come up with, we had some discussions on school liaison and student engagement topics for next year. We, the majority of us felt that this year's session, this year's approach with being a high school student for half a day was very beneficial, and we might want to extend that down to the middle school level, so we'll continue with those conversations as well. But overall, it was a pretty good year for communications. I think that's all on my list. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda? Chris? Rick? Microphone?
Planning met last week. We've covered budget, and we're making a lot of progress on the budget, and we're getting close. I think we have another planning meeting set for the fifth. We're trying to determine whether it's 7:30 or 11:30 or sometime in between, so that's where we're currently at.
John?
Madam President, I, one comment, Rick, if you could, just for a moment, or Brock, and then I'll go into my comments. With planning, HIC had some updated insurance information. Is that something to just apprise the board of briefly tonight? Please.
Members of the board, John, the Health Insurance Committee has been working at great length on the renewal, which is due in September, and really looking at options for health insurance going forward. There's a number of things that have been looked at as we think about a renewal right now, because of the timing of getting prepared for a complete overhaul, which could be high deductible HSA or some sort of a new cafeteria-type model. The timing of that is critical, and it would probably have to happen at soonest, January 1 of 15. So, now we're looking at different options, which means potentially changing deductibles or out-of-pocket to try to drive premiums lower than what is being suggested, because we're hearing double-digit premium increases. Other options is trying to have a differentiated cost share. Right now, we pay 80/20 regardless of your selection, and we're looking at options to have a differentiated cost share between employee, employee plus dependent, and family. And we've put some information out to the Health Insurance Committee to get them to look at options and give us their force ranking of those options to be prepared for the 10th to bring a proposal and a recommendation to the board. So, I think you'll see something much more formal as a presentation from HIC on June 10th.
Thank you, Brock. And Madam President, I'll just continue. The reason I deferred there was I knew I wasn't able to make that meeting, and the information is really evolving quickly. Only report I have is Dr. Schatz and I participated in the GED graduation the other night, and I want to say there were about 97 or so students from all walks of life and all ages and getting degrees, and it's just really something. Jennifer Free, the, did a remarkable, is a remarkable leader. And by the way, she's not the same birthday Jennifer Free as the other Jennifer Free, just working all that out. But... But she's remarkable. Letitia, I'm not sure her last name, from Lutheran Social Services, just moved us all with a message of hope and being happy in life. So it was quite an experience to, you know, that's bigger than my high school, bigger than a lot of high schools in the state, just that little, that group there of adult education graduates, and it's really something that, what we do in the community.
Yeah?
I'm tempted to talk about the size of your high school, but I'll leave that one alone.
It is high school.
GAC met, and thank you all for giving us your priority rankings. So we took those and kind of have put together what will turn into a consolidated report to come back to the board for final approval. Just to give you the highlights of that, our number one legislative issue will be addressing what we perceive are needed changes in the K-12 funding bill, in particular, the foundation of formula. And that will encompass everything from ELL to special ed to fall enrollment. And in that, address the loss of the SNL tax that we just received as well. Our second priority that surfaced was pre-K, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment because we need to at least have an agreement from the board for what GAC perceives our next step should be on that one. Third priority was increased state funding for the school construction loan program. And the fourth priority, which we don't have a position per se on, but a monitor at this point in time, were possible changes to TFFR and PERS. I want to speak to the pre-K issue because as we discussed it at a GAC committee, one of the issues is that we clearly do not have capacity in brick and mortar today for Fargo Public Schools to be offering pre-K throughout the community in all locations. We just don't have that room. And there are lots of private providers in our community that do a great job at pre-K. So what we would like to do with the board's permission is to kind of hold a roundtable with the stakeholders in pre-K in our community. Robin has agreed, if we get the okay from you folks to put together such a thing, to kind of lead it up from GAC's perspective, and over the next coming months, get all of the players in the pre-K programming area in our community together and talk about what could we do that would effectively expand the opportunities, in particular for families that can't afford to fund pre-K on their own? And how might we be most effective in getting help from the state in doing that? So unless there's somebody that's really opposed to that, we're going to at least start with that and then probably come back with a formal recommendation based upon those roundtable discussions. And we'll, of course, invite any and all board members, and certainly going to have some of our administration hopefully at those roundtable meetings too.
Paul?
Jim, you may have said this, but with the roundtable, would the outcome of that be to consider options that might include the FPS sponsoring pre-K, or is it simply to monitor how the other people are doing?
No, it's to really have a chalkboard that says, what as a community can we do best in pre-K? And that may have us involved directly, that may have us advocating for some kind of state funding for low-income families to choose from qualified pre-K providers. It's to get a capacity assessment done. Is there really a spot for every child if in fact there was some funding source that would allow every child to have a quality pre-K experience? So we're not going in with any preconceived notions, more a partnering with all the pre-K providers, recognizing the huge value to us if a child had a quality pre-K experience before they show up for kindergarten. So that's no preconceived notion whatsoever. Well, I'm sensing nobody objects to that, so GAC will work towards that over the summer months, and we'll be back with a formal position to take on that or to be considered. The summer, North Dakota State School Board Association meeting is coming up, June 8th and 9th. I'll be out in Bismarck for that. Just want to highlight a few things. There is a major movement afoot to change, for lack of knowing the right word, the accountability and reporting systems for REAs. They're very autonomous today, and we look quite a bit different. The SEC and other REAs in the state are totally different animals. I think there are a lot of people that believe DPI should be more directly involved in REAs. So we have invited Kirsten and one of the directors of one of the REAs to come and kind of talk about the consortium effort that they've had and conversations going on the last few months. So the State School Board Association, and ultimately our members, will have a sense of what's afoot there for legislative changes coming at REAs. There was a request at the last fall meeting after the DUES restructuring was passed to take a look again to see if there was something we could do for the districts that felt they were taking huge, huge increases. This was really kind of my driving thing back to the board. The staff has put a lot of numbers together. We're going to, at least from the board of directors' perspective, finalize any changes we might be recommending, and quite frankly, I got a feeling we're not going to recommend any. But at least we will have looked as we were requested to by the members. There are going to be some changes to some employee benefit policies of the state association employees that are going to be looked at. We'll spend a fair amount of time looking at specific legislative ideas and possible bills that our staff would like to put forward for the membership to consider. On the second day, we'll finish up the legislative ideas, work on the school law seminar because that has been taken over by the state association. At this point in time, there is a disconnect between the State School Board Association and the School of, I'll get their name wrong, the State Legal Council Association that works for school districts, a little leadership struggles going on between our organizations. So we're going to look at that topic a bit. And then we're going to have a couple hours with Senator Dwight Cook and Representative Mike Nathie to really have a fruitful discussion, hopefully on education agendas that they may have versus what we may have. And my last thing to report on is, to the best of my knowledge, not one item has been turned in for the employee picnic. Am I correct? Ann Marie?
That would be correct.
The clock is ticking.
Okay. President's report, notes on the bottom that the prizes are requested, and they're, so to reiterate Jim's point, and also if you have any suggestions about the retreat, please get it to Ann Marie and I before June 2nd. The next governance committee is on June 4th, and we will be doing more finalizing of that at that time. The only, well, I could comment on a couple of the things I've done. The Discovery International Art Night is something that's been going on for about five years, six years. Whether you're a discovery liaison or not, put it on your calendar another year. It's a really outstanding event that's improved over time, and the diversity of the families in the school that come out and prepare food and art and everything, it's really quite something to see. And today I went to the PSA screening at CBE. That's the, they created, help me, PSA, it's late. Thank you. Public Service Announcements for nonprofits from World Vats, Prairie Public TV, Ronald McDonald House, Hero Healthcare, ASAH, which is the African Soul, American Heart, Humane Society, Emergency Food Pantry. These kids put together these PSAs, which were amazing, and it was all a learning project and everything. So I thought of you, Paul, specifically because you're always talking about the video production and theater and things of that, and I thought this is, you know, sixth graders starting to work at that, and it's really quite amazing. So that was fun. Thank you to everyone for all your efforts at the end of the year, staff and administration and board members. It's a really busy time of year, and it's hard to get everywhere. It's, in fact, it's impossible to get everywhere. Thank you, John, for graduation, and thank you to those of you who will be at the graduations this coming weekend. Good luck with the last couple of days of school. And our next meeting is Election Day. I'll get you, one second, is Election Day. So good luck to those between now and then. And John?
Madam President, on other reports, we, Robin, you weren't around when we wished you a happy birthday, so Robin's birthday was on Sunday. Happy birthday, Robin. And our fearless leader is the next, Sunday after next, June 8th. So we have two birthdays right here to celebrate.
Thank you, John. And so I said the next meeting's June 10th. Debriefing, anyone? Everybody's so tired that, well, I'll just say thank you very much for the good fruitful discussion, and I look forward to part three next time. And everybody have a nice couple of weeks, and we will see you on June 10th.